Seven o'clock, are we ready? All right. Welcome, everyone. We're going to call this meeting to order. The Centerfield City Council, a regular meeting. Today is Monday, March 20th. And I will ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Bushy.
President.
Councilmember Hill.
President.
Councilmember Kurtz is absent. Vice Mayor Yaren Scalati is absent. Mayor Kate.
Present. Three of us are here. We're small and mighty teams, right? Sorry. Okay. And I am inviting the Assistant City Attorney to report out on the closed session that we had on Monday, March 13th.
There were no reportable actions taken at the closed session. Thank you.
Thank you. So, welcome, everyone. We're glad you're here. This is the first time you've attended a council meeting. We're hybrid, so we have people in the chambers. Yes, we do. And we have people listening in virtually. Today's also the first official day of spring, and it definitely felt like that with the sunshine. And we have many great upcoming holidays that will be occurring in our community. We have Ramadan on Thursday, Passover, Easter, Orthodox Easter. We have Mother's Day, Earth Day, Father's Day. I think we are all ready for spring and to have the rain behind us. I do want to give a shout out to all of the departments that has helped to keep our community safe as we've had so many atmospheric rivers. And I'm not going to look at the paper because I think they're calling the one tomorrow an atmospheric river, too. But thank you to staff that has been responding to our community. As part of the opening remarks, we like to include a land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that the present day city of San Rafael is traditionally home to the Coast Miwok people, many of whom today are tribal citizens of the Federated Indians of Great Rancheria. We thank the original caretakers of this land and honor their continuing involvement and stewardship practices that benefit us all. I'm going to turn to the city clerk. She can describe how people can participate in tonight's evening, in tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. This meeting is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube, and members of the public can provide comment by phone by calling 669-444-9171 and use the meeting ID 86061905675 pound and pressing star nine to raise your hand for comments. Or you can watch and comment directly through Zoom using the link on the agenda and use the raise hand feature. If you experience technical difficulties, you can contact me at city.clerk@cityofcenterfield.org. Displayed on the podium and the projector is a two-minute timer to help you stay within the two-minute timeframe for public comments. You're invited, and you're not required, to introduce yourself, to say what part of Centerfield you reside in, or if you're from outside of Centerfield. And we are offering closed captioning for this meeting. You can select the live transcript button on Zoom to enable this feature. Thank you.
Thank you. So, the first item is open time for public expression. The city clerk explained how we did it on the virtual world, but we first turn to the folks that are here. And I do have cards, and I'll go through. And if I call your name, come on down. If you haven't filled out a card but want to speak, that's okay. You can speak after we've gone through the card. And in anything that's brought up during open time, the council and staff were not able to respond to it. So, we will listen, and we hear your input. Being that it's not on the formal agenda, we're not able to respond. So, I just wanted to clarify that because sometimes questions come up, and we aren't able to respond in this lifetime. So, with that, I'm going to open the public comment. And first, the list is Jennifer Turek. Then after Jennifer is Michael McIntosh. Welcome.
I was wanting to make some comments about rent control, if that's all right.
And you can speak to whatever you'd like during the two minutes, whatever you want.
Well, I'm a homeowner, and the only way I can afford my home is that I rent the downstairs. And I feel that there's coming possible restrictions and see them happening, what's going on in Fairfax that people are completely up in arms about, that happened overnight with no vote, that someone just snuck in, is how it feels, I think, to most of the citizens there. And I'm, as somebody who has a big mortgage to pay and taxes that go up every year, lots of home maintenance, I've spent, just in this last storm, just in one week, almost $4,000 on a tree that came down, and I've continued to have all sorts of maintenance issues, which is fine. That's part of homeownership, and that's what I signed up for. But what I didn't sign up for was to have the government overreach coming my way to tell me what I can charge in my rental, which is the only way I can afford the house. I'm self-employed. I always have been. Started out a very small amount of money, bought a duplex. The rent on the other side helped me be able to buy the duplex. I wouldn't have been able to qualify. I started off not in Marin County. Most people probably shouldn't start off in Marin County if income, you know, and cost is an issue. Started off in a whole different county, built equity there. Then I was finally able to buy a duplex on Lincoln Avenue in San Rafael. And again, the rental income helped me qualify. It's this 3% or whatever it's going to be that's available for owners to collect takes into consideration nothing having to do with the maintenance. I put my life savings into this house, and I would hate to lose it. But if I was strapped to try to take on a long-term renter and along with some of these insane laws that people are considering in this society, I think it's, all these houses are going to end up being owned by corporations, not mom and pop people or someone like me who grew up with no money. Nothing was handed to me. I didn't get in a divorce, and I had a father in jail, actually, so I can say I had no education. So, it's not like I haven't had to work very hard for everything I do have, and I don't want the government telling me how I can operate my own home. I, right now, I'm doing Airbnb rental because I'm terrified of the laws. I have an older mother. If she ever needed to stay downstairs, and I was forced to rehouse someone and pay all the money that now in Fairfax, you have to include $2,000 just to rehouse the dog. So, if someone looks at what just went on over there, they should be terrified and running down here like I am. Anyway, I think that's probably two minutes.
Thank you for your comments. Yeah, thank you. Michael McIntosh, and then Bob Ulrich.
As I get older, I need my glasses. What's up here?
Oh, yeah.
Excuse me.
No worries.
Okay. Thank you, counsel. It's been a few years since I came before you. Please allow me the full five minutes to speak as I represent a group of 65 people.
Will be two minutes, but we're all happy to take whatever you write.
Probably a little bit over, but I didn't get time. If I finish, it's like 10 minutes. I would also like to compliment your good fortune retained Bob Epstein as town council. He's one of the best town councils within all the local municipalities. I'm here to discuss an issue that is tearing our community apart. Rents are not sustainable. The cost to maintain any improvement continues to go up. The bonds and taxes you pass eventually end on the back of tenants and stakeholders. As further restrictions on housing policies and providers mount, prices go up to offset, and the housing becomes scarcer. Implementing these rent control programs require more services, again, raising taxes on a community you purport you want to help. How did we get here? From failed housing policies. Restrictive zoning has created the issue before us tonight. In 2019, the state passed comprehensive AB 1482 just cause of rent control. Please allow it to work before we keep tearing the communities apart by listing to small fractured groups and groups that profit from the furtherance of more zoning. The groups that come before you to demand that you relieve their burden only consolidates and move their burdens to another group. How much can the housing providers take until they enact the Ellis Act? Then what will we do? Raise taxes on single-family residences to pay for bankrupt zoning policies? Are your policies encouraging the building of more housing? These failed housing policies are putting more people on the street. Rent control discourages maintenance and improvements. Most importantly, rent control and just cause provisions become so onerous that people will not invest, people will not build. Rent control stagnates our communities and stagnates our futures. Look at Detroit, Chicago, San Francisco, Oakland, and Berkeley. We do not need to mimic their failures. Remember, a housing provider survives with good tenants and never wants to lose good tenants. So, you could also relieve the rent burden by reducing the amount we pay for gas or food. How about reducing our utility costs? The city of San Rafael annually collects approximately $24 million in property tax and quote unquote "related." Assuming you're about eight times larger than Fairfax, that would put your collected users' utility tax at over $2.7 million. You could use this non earmarked source of income to subsidize those who need help.
Thank you. If you could wrap up, and then I will definitely take an email, and there isn't anything on the agenda this evening.
If I may, I do know that actually we're entitled to three minutes by our constitution and case law for any public appearance for the time with any meeting like this. You could certainly restrict it three minutes, but that is a legal entitlement I have, and I can probably be done, as you can see. I only have two thirds of that page. Thank you. Fairfax recently passed their own rent control just cause ordinance after listening to the DSA. Fairfax sheepishly did not notify property owners or housing providers. Immediately thereafter, over 600 signatures asked the council to allow a vote. Three Mondays ago, Fairfax was served with a preamble and an initiative to repeal both ordinances. The town is evaluating how much their failure will cost the town if they do not acknowledge their mistake. Fairfax cannot afford to take it to a vote and further divide our community. A recall for the Fairfax Town Council will be filed June 7th. Please allow me to explain the Fairfax ordinances. If there's a fire, flood, or work to be done where the tenant cannot live there, you must house your tenant elsewhere for up to five years. A family of five can cost you between $8,000 and $11,000 per month. The dog alone is $1,800 per month. If you rent an ADU or a room in your house, you are not protected from these ordinances. If a tenant is 61 years of age, you must provide a one-year notice. If you're a senior trying to survive on fixed income, you cannot afford to rent a room to age in place, you could lose your house. Tenants, full names, and the exact amount of rent paid must be recorded and held in Berkeley. After the first year, to review for fair increases, this information becomes publicly available next to the 1099 Ks from the IRS. I hope both tenant and housing provider declares all rent money exchanged. The most draconian just cause provision incorporated is the right for a tenant to sublet. A housing provider cannot unreasonably withhold a written request to sublet. The landlord cannot make it contingent that the new tenant pays the housing provider directly. Fairfax also incorporated Cal Health Code 506, whereas two people can live in 70 square feet. Thereafter, you can add one person for every 50 square feet, providing you have 120 square feet for communal space, bathroom, and kitchen. A 1,000-square-foot unit, again, 1,000 square feet, without internal walls, could hold over 14 people. That means 14 cars. Where is the fire safety egress when you block the streets with all these cars? If you want to lower rental prices, if you want to get people off the streets, don't add these rent control and just cause burdens that do the opposite of what you want. Support the building of housing, supply and demand. More housing being available will lead to lowering of prices. Thank you for the consideration of the additional time.
You're welcome, and I'm sure you see that tonight our public hearing is our progress report for our previous general plan and housing element. So, I'm sure you'll find that fascinating and to look back, but I'm sure you'll be appreciative of that. And just to be clear, San Rafael is not Fairfax. Just have to say that. Okay. So, come on down, Bob Ulrich, and then Tom.
Good evening, I'm Bob Ulrich, and I am a 35-year resident of the West End, and I'm here to speak about the West End, the permitting of the West End Block Party that has been submitted. I was here last October with several of my neighbors, and we had a lot of concerns about this block party, the noise, public urination, all sorts of things that the, that systemic effect of this huge block party, two nights a week, all summer long. And the owner of that establishment was here that night also, and I'll remind you that his response to us being here was, I could have showed up here with a whole bunch of people that support this. And what he didn't say was that, you know, these are legitimate complaints, and I'm going to reach out to my neighbors, and I'm going to see if we can't work on some sort of compromise. What he did do also was that he went out and launched a social media campaign, which claimed that his neighbors were trying to shut him down. In fact, that wasn't true at all. None of us were trying to shut this event down. But that's, he, also, Adam, I passed him on the street dozens of times since then. He's ignored me and not even gone so far as to make eye contact with me so that he can talk about. He's not reached out to any single neighbor in that neighborhood to address these complaints. That's because we're the enemy now. And every single person that has ever made a complaint to Adam Vialanti at the half pint or immediately becomes the enemy, and that's exactly how he treats him. And he's been managing relationships in that neighborhood. I've been there 35 years, even longer than that than he has been there, and it's been that way ever since, and we're just really getting sort of fed up with it. And it really, if you're in Mr. Vialanti's position, it really doesn't even make sense to try to not even, at the very least, establish some rapport with your neighbors when you're requesting this big permit. Not only did he not reach out, he's requested more. He wants to do it further into the year. He wants it later in the evenings, and he hasn't yet spoken to anyone. And the only way that would make sense is if he was emboldened with the confidence that these permits are going to be approved for him. Okay? So, because that's been the case. He doesn't feel the need to establish any rapport. He doesn't even have the need to establish within the confines of his license. I'm almost finished. It's a complete backdoor approach to running a business in San Rafael. And I've been witnessing the pint die a slow death since long before COVID. And COVID, in fact, was the absolute best thing to ever happen to that establishment. It got an ejection of federal money, and the city was very, quite wonderfully, making all sorts of combinations to help small business owners, and everybody appreciates that. But the pint, it suffers from is a total lack of creative management and just not even the absolute fundamentals of managing relationships in that neighborhood. It's a completely dysfunctional approach to running a business, and it appears that it's now being rewarded, and not only rewarded, but cultivated with the Downtown Business Improvement Board.
Thank you for your wrap up. Great. Thank you. Who have next? Tom O'Cook? Decook? Decook? And after Tom was.
Let me speak.
Joseph.
I'm here much of the time. My girlfriend lives approximately at Fourth and G, right across from that. I'm a union electrician, stagehand, have a lot of experience with events, and I'm also a professional bartender and chef. I gotta get my glasses on here. So, no permit for West End Block Party. No, no, no. The tavern can have music one night per month, along with dining under the lights. They don't deserve special privilege. We have the right to quiet enjoyment in our homes under California state law. We cannot enjoy our normal, quiet evenings at home, conversations, or enjoy music, reading books, or listening to film because of the loud music coming from the Pint Size Lounge Organization, which blows music from concert venue-sized speakers and amplifiers approximately 40 feet from our front door. After the live event ends, there are people, drunken people, yelling and screaming until midnight. People urinate against the walls of our building and drink in public when the live music ends at 9:00. At 9:00 PM, music blares from inside of the bar. The city of San Rafael is spending somewhat limited budget they have. They have many other things. They have big problems to address. They shouldn't be there spending money on setting up blockades, having police to come over there, money on insurance, and more, and numerous DUI people possibly leaving the event. The West End is for local community, not for people from coming in from Nevada and other places. My girlfriend and I already have daily anxiety about the potential issue of another pit permit for this horrible event. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Joseph? I'm sorry, I can't read your last name. Adam, sorry.
Hello, Mayor, counsel. Thank you for letting us speak. I live on G Street, and two minutes is a short amount of time. I am going to follow up with some emails to you guys with a video of one of the BARK patrons that accosted me on G Street. I also have a video of a very raucous performance at the same time that the decibel readings were showing that it was only 50. I'm sorry to say, those decibel readings were really handpicked and weren't representative of what was going on there. We all took decibel readings that were 10, 15, 20 louder than what was being shown. And I think Sam is a very nice guy, but it is somewhat telling that the guy who was in charge of doing the decibel readings, in fact, told me that he was worried about not having his job this year if the event didn't go on. Also, what is glaringly missing is the fact that he actually was witness shortly after the event where I was accosted and saw Adam get in, the owner, get into a pushing match with the gentleman afterwards. Never mentions that in his glowing review of the, you know, of the event. What I also want to say is that my son, wife and I, my son was born in our house on G Street. We've lived there for 15, 16 years. He went to Sun Valley School. My mom lives in Sun Valley. My brother lives in San Antonio. My sister lives near Marin General. We love this house, and we have been tortured by raucous outside patios that were illegally held. The patio was open illegally in the back of Adam's property for years. It was finally shut down, and since then, there's been incredibly loud amplified music coming from the bar. And all of a sudden now, then, the reward for really being disrespectful of the surrounding neighbors is that he gets licensed to have this 48 concert series. What's being proposed, it was about 44 concerts last year, and it's not only have you guys, not only has it not been dialed down, it's in fact been increased in terms of the number of performances and also how late it can go. It's just really troubling. We actually, if this goes through, we're going to pull up stakes. We're, you know, either renting or selling our place. But here's the bad news. Who's going to rent a place or buy a place that's 50 yards from a concert happening, you know, 50 times a year? It's outrageous. We're just asking for some simple consideration. None of the local neighbors have ever been notified. Nothing's been sent out. It's all been done behind the scenes. It's really unfair, and all we're asking is just make it like the rest of the Fourth Street. Have it be a once-in-one thing. You wouldn't have heard from me. It would have been fine. This is outrageous. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I think we have two more people that want to speak on this item. Angela Tucker, and then Elise.
Hi, I'm Angela, and I live in San Rafael. I've lived here for 25 years, and I'm here to speak about the Pint Size Lounge and his concerts. I understand that the outdoor concerts helped two failing businesses to stay afloat during COVID, but Joe Biden ended the COVID emergency months ago. In that light, if these businesses are still in need of outdoor entertainment to stay afloat, maybe it's time to let them go. Pond Farm, The Mayflower Kitchen Table, et cetera, are all doing fine without outdoor concerts. There's a very good chance that the restaurant or bar that replaces these businesses mirror the successes of the aforementioned establishments. That's capitalism. Look at Johnny Donuts, for example. When you prop up a business, all you end up doing is bringing the neighborhood down. The pint size is not a winning formula. It's an outdated throwback dive bar, and we already have several of those that are successful, like Matucci's and Barstown Town. The concerts are too much. They're too loud. They're too late at night. There are too many hours out of time, too many days a week, and too many weeks a year. We've already suffered through around 150 concerts, and now they're proposing 52 more concerts. I might not have that number right. In conclusion, Mayor Kate, you assured us last year that there would be transparency this year. That's the word you used, transparency. Yet, we come to find out on our own that Sarah Tippel is trying to sneak it through again without contacting us until the last minute, when it's too late. What happened? Sarah took no responsibility and even claimed that she doesn't deal with complaints. That's what she said last week. Last year, she was the person to go to for complaints. So, what happened? What happened to her list of people with complaints about the event? I am a responsible taxpaying citizen, and I'm being thwarted by an inexplicably cozy relationship between the city and a single bar. What's going on?
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
And the last card I have on this is Elise.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. I spoke with you, first of all, hello. Thank you for having me here. I spoke last year, and I poured my heart out to you. That was my husband. We've lived in our house for 16 years. We are right next to the concerts. I'm not going to go through all of that again. You heard me. You remember what I said. I love my home, and I am so sad to have to fight just to feel safe and comfortable and enjoy. fight just to feel safe and comfortable and enjoy my home. These concerts, as everyone else said, I don't have to repeat it. I love live music. During COVID, it was so, I mean, we loved it. It was great. We thought it was going to just be for the summer. It used to be once a year, but two nights a week on a school night, I have a child, I work on the weekends. It's, it's just, it is outrageous and I'm so stressed out that it's gonna start again. I'm having PTSD. I, I was hoping, because I actually was so relieved last year that we would be a part of this, that the residents adjacent to the music would be a part of this discussion. We were not, as my neighbor just told you, we, this is being pushed through. We just so happened to have found out about it. But I do have a friend from Terra Linda that received a flyer and the flyer reads, "Do you like the West End Block Party? If so, we need to hear from you or it may not happen next year. There are neighbors that do not like the event and do not want to see it happen next year. We have heard from a few of them, but we would love to hear from you too." From the San Rafael BID, they are doing great outreach to everyone else, but not us, not the ones that are next to this. And I really would like to see some porta potties and some trash cans. One of our neighbors was coming tonight. She's coming straight from work. She lives next door to us. And she was cleaning up trash afterwards and we've had numerous people urinating on our property. And I was actually, it was actually kind of laughed at, you know, I think it was Sarah or one of her. It was, you know, whoa, we could, people actually peed on your property? I mean, come on, everybody knows that if you have a concert and there's no toilets, where are people gonna go? We're right next to it. So I'm, I'm sorry to be so intense right now, but I, I'm stressed out over this.
Thank you.
So.
Thank you guys. Thank you for your comments. And actually, Elise, I don't know, you didn't put Gmail. You don't have to put one on here. But I appreciate you all coming down and I am disappointed that the conversations that we ensured wanted to happen have not happened. And we have a new Economic Development Director, Director Hinkle. So what I'll ask is that the city clerk share if it's okay with you all. Because your emails are on here and just to have the conversation. And when you talk about compromise, that's, I mean, you're giving suggestions. This isn't the place to try to have us figure that out. It's not on the agenda, as I said. But I'm incredibly disappointed because we did make that promise to you. I felt the neighborhood, as we said when it came up last year, really kind of went with it because of COVID and everything else. But San Rafael is usually, we pride ourselves and be more thorough and collaborative when it comes to community initiatives. And I felt, as I said last year, we fell short last year, or we fell short. So I'm incredibly disappointed. It's not on tonight's agenda, so these will go to Director Hinkle. He'll email you guys. And probably Councilmember Hill will be a part of those conversations as well as in his district. So thank you for coming down and sharing with us. You can always email us as well. As you said, someone's racing over here from business. That sounds stressful. And we'll get a conversation going on and to figure out what makes sense for the community.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, so we still have other folks in the room that might want to give public comments. So if so, come on down and once we're done with the chamber, we'll go to the virtual. So anyone else, you don't have to have done a card. Yeah, so come on down.
Good evening. It's a good thing to see this open again. My name is Jack Wilkinson and I'm a real estate broker and a landlord. And there are two things that happened in 1776 and I, no, you're all aware of one. The other one was the publishing of Joseph Smith's book, A Wealth of Nations. And what it said was, "The information that prices provide are the information that creates markets and markets operate on." Part of the problem that we run into, and in this case, I'm speaking to rent control, is the government's distort markets anytime they interfere in those markets. And so we have to be very, very careful about doing that. Do we want to distort the market to the extent that people don't want to provide housing? Or in the case of Genesee, lose the value that they have in their housing? I sell commercial real estate. Commercial real estate is bought based on the income it produces. And if it doesn't produce enough income, people won't buy it and they won't provide rental housing. Or in the case of poor Jennifer, she may end up losing the house because she couldn't afford the upkeep of it without the rent. And I'm sure she thought about that when she brought the property. So all I'm asking is that we pay attention to the Fifth Amendment of the Constitution, which states in the Second Clause, "The government may take private property for public use, but must pay just compensation." So please keep property rights and freedom in mind when you think about rent control. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jack. Are there others in the chamber? Not seen any. This is, again, we're still in open time for public expression. I'll turn to the city clerk. This is for any item not on the agenda this evening.
We do have a few hands raised.
Hi there. This is Lori. I'm glad I'm not the only one talking about lack of communication. I'd like to know first why there are so many potholes under the freeway every single time it rains and they're never fixed properly. I mean, granted, there's gonna be potholes, but literally every single time it rains and they're never fixed properly. And somebody needs to be aware of that and can't seem to get that to public works, so I'm telling you guys. The other thing is that there are no lane delineators on Third Street. And I wanted that to be noted on the record in case people hit each other because their lanes literally are gone. There are no white lines because of the construction, I'm sure. But last time there was construction, they would put the lines back at night. So somebody needs to be aware of that and I'm just assuming that nobody's gotten out of their chairs on Morphew and come to look. I also wonder why the city council approved letting the Walgreens entrance to be moved to Luton's, which is not only not a controlled intersection, but has 10 times as many incidents versus the incidents on Third and Lindoro entrance over a five-year period. That was handed to me by the police department. I've been sitting on this for quite a while, waiting for somebody in public works to come up with that and I'm tired of waiting. For any of you on the council that thought that the transition from C and D Street to Two Ways was smooth, that would be incorrect. Most of us now go straight on D Street, down to First Street, turn on First Street and go up on B Street to get to the freeway. If you change B Street to Two Ways, nobody's gonna get anywhere. Not only that, you were told that there were at least two public meetings and that is incorrect. One of them was the Federation meeting in April. Amy told Rafat that that was incorrect, that April mentioned the meeting. She also mentioned that it was on the Thursday, the 18th of January and the 18th of January is actually a Wednesday.
Hello, this is Amy Likeover-Gerstle Park to the public, council, mayor, attorneys and manager. I spoke to the council on February 26 regarding your February 2 retreat agenda posting, which I maintain did not follow the Brown Act. There was an unagendized staff report and council input. I wrote to Attorney Epstein, who does not agree and suggests a staff report tonight will solve this posting issue. I request the city properly and legally agendize your future retreats and the council make this error right by acknowledging future best practices. The Brown Act requires that a meaningful agenda be posted in advance of the meeting. Your agenda read, "City Council Discussion on Work Styles and Team Approach", yet there was a staff report and discussion about projects with broad community interest. The stated agenda does not describe what transpired. I maintain the city violated the Brown Act by discussing matters not listed on the agenda. A meaningful agenda would state, "Report from the Community Development Director about city projects and city council personal goals and work styles. Special care should be taken to describe on the agenda each distinct action to be taken by legislative body and avoid overbroad descriptions of a project. If the project is actually set, it must be listed separately on the agenda. Council, mayor and staff, the law demands this of you and you should adhere to the letter of the law." Thank you very much.
Yes, this is John Reynolds, Johnson Reynolds. I'm a part of the first part of First United Methodist Church San Rafael, also live in the canal. We need to have housing that's affordable for people that are low wage workers, first responders, home care workers, gardeners. The issue that was presented last city council meeting with a lot of people from the Voices of the Canal that came in, we need to address that issue. We need to see what we can do with just cause ordinance and what we can do with mandatory mediation. I know that landlords need to maintain their apartments and have money to do that then. And they, they have to have a, some money coming to them. But at the same time, you know, people that need to have a place to live, families, children in those families, others. So we need to really address that issue through the just cause ordinance and/or the mandatory mediation, if that's possible. I know we're trying to do something for the residents of 400 Canal and there have been some steps taken in that regard and I, I appreciate that. There's maybe some possibilities to the Board of Supervisors tomorrow to deal with some kind of rental assistance for people that are low income. And those things are good. But let's be sensitive to particularly people from 400 Canal and other people that have families and children and need to have, according to them, dignity and responsibility from the landlords and from the city council in that regard.
I see no other hands raised. I'll give everyone a moment. I see no further public comment.
Thank you. I will close. Open time for public expression. And again, we always appreciate people taking the time to share their thoughts about the issues that concern them. The next item is city manager and council member reports and I'll turn to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Kate and City Council. I just have a couple of quick updates and announcements. First of all, I just wanted to call out that at the very end of last month, closed the San Rafael Canal dredging project, which has been a long time in the making. Although the construction phase of the project has ended, city public work staff, it will still be working on permitting, surveying, sediment testing and reporting aspects of the project. So there's still a lot of things going on behind the scenes. But the, the big milestone is that the, the federal dredge itself is complete. And as part of the umbrella permitting for the effort, public work staff is going to be administering permits for parcel owners who elected not to dredge with that particular dredging, but will be going forward in the, in the coming years. So the city helped secure a 10-year permit through the regulatory agency. So it'll be going on for a while as various private parcels decide to dredge their areas under the city's permit. So after completing the federally authorized channel at the very end of February, or at the beginning of February, the Dutcher Group then moved on to the city-owned and the other private parcels after that and completed those by the end of February. It's been a city council goal for a very long time, so I just felt like I wanted to call it out here. There's so many things about the canal, being able to have a navigable walk, waterway for storm and emergency response access, increased protection from sea level rise and then all of the economic and recreational benefits that the channel brings. It's been about 20 years since a full dredge, so this was a 20-year accomplishment. And the last partial dredge was 2011, which was at the very end of former Mayor Alboros' term. So it was quite a while ago. So I just wanted to call it out and I think credit goes to the entire San Rafael City Council, who's been pushing to make this happen at all levels of government for a number of years. And particularly Mayor Kate, who I think was at every single meeting on this topic from beginning to end and worked closely with Congress member Jared Huffman and his staff as we tried to get this into federal budgets. And then also the, the community partners, who I think were a huge part of making this happen as well because they were, they were patient but persistent. And I think extremely patient as it's such a long process going through the Army Corps of Engineers budget process. And you get a little piece of it funded and next year a little more piece of it funded until it finally can happen. And then just on the staff side, real quick, a former public work staff, Bill Guerin and Talia Smith. And then more recently, Public Works Director April Miller and Stephen Acker were instrumental in kind of bringing that home of projects of people that had started that in the past. So it's just a really big milestone and like I said, 20 years was the last full dredge 20 years ago. So just wanted to mark that at the very end of last month of that finishing. And then also quickly, just wanted to call out that the Resilient Neighborhoods Climate Action Workshop starts up again on March 30th, so it's right around the corner. So we get asked from time to time of how people can, how they can get involved from, from a sustainability or climate change aspect. And this is a great way to go through the climate action workshops with your neighbors and, and learn more and also pledge how you're going to reduce your carbon footprint. So those, that's just starting up at resilientneighborhoods.org, all one word, www.resilientneighborhoods.org. And the next cohort, it's been going on for many years, but the next cohort is March 30th to April 5th. So just wanted to call that out. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for highlighting the dredge. 20 years, we gotta not have it go so long next time. Thank you for that. I'll turn to my colleagues, Councilmember Bushy.
I attended the first in-person meeting of the Central Marine Sanitation Agency in almost three years last week. We're meeting in a hybrid format, which we moved to seamlessly. Very excited to be able to do that. We are looking forward to more public participation. So far, we just have the system ready, but it's there should members of the public choose to avail themselves of it. And we had a long overdue pizza party in celebration of the retirement of Kate Brulee, who's a longtime administrative assistant to, to the board and much loved. We also had our first in-person meeting of San Rafael Sanitation Agency Board. That went well as well. I think we, it was the same. We had hybrid systems available and we look forward to the members of the public using them. I also met with Supervisor Sackett. We met very fortuitously at the La Coloma Development, where we went out on a walk to inspect the ongoing renovation projects there on the path as well as the playground. The gates to the path were closed, so we did not go out there, but the gates to the playground structure were open. So we walked through there and went to view what was underway. The manager of the project saw us and escorted us out very kindly, but firmly. And but importantly, we took the opportunity to get a briefing as to their completion schedule. And he explained that they're behind because of the weather, but that within the coming two weeks, they hope both areas to be open. The public is extremely interested in those being reopened. So that set me up nicely to report on that at the La Coloma Oversight Committee meeting today. Although it came somewhat of a surprise to some of the people there that I was quite so knowledgeable. But having been so recently escorted from the premises, I was all, all informed. Last, last week was a meeting of the Library Foundation. Sometimes we forget how the Library Foundation fits into the library picture here. The purpose of the Library Foundation is to build a new library and they are watching with keen interest the city's process to evaluate plans for a new library and are very excited about next steps. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill?
Thank you, Mayor Kate. I have one item to report. Last week I got to go on a ride along with the Department of Public Works with Director April Miller and Maintenance Operations Manager Ryan Montez. It was very informative, not the least of which I got to see the sign shop, the vehicle maintenance bays and all of the grounds at Morphew. It was right after the, the major rains. And what it really told me is just how on a daily basis, much like first responders, the public works department does a lot of very heroic things to make certain that they're responding to very urgent needs in, in the community. And specifically, Director April Miller has allocated resources to make certain that with fallen trees and other incidents like sinkholes, they're addressed, they're addressed in a very timely manner. The department works with a lot of constraints and is able to accomplish a lot. So to community members, I will just say. So to community members, I will just say, I will attest to the fact that they work within a limited budget with limited staff, and they do a lot. And obviously, we look to make certain that they can get grant money when we can and make certain that they're as staffed as we can get them. But thank you to April and the entire department for letting me come through that day.
Thank you, and I'll round out the report. Also had the first in-person meeting for SMART, the Sonoma Marin Area Rapid Transit, and we met almost all up in Santa Rosa, so that was adding travel time to the day. It was great to see everyone. We did not have any pizza party. After ridership portion of your report. So very quickly, I was reporting out on SMART, Sonoma Marin Area Rapid Transit. We're looking at a three-day commuter pass, and then we also talked about freight during our meeting. And then I moved on to a really great story, and I was like me telling a joke, San Rafael Little League. We had the opening day on Saturday. There was a parade. 350 young athletes were out on the field, and I was honored to make a few comments. After I finished the comments, I was told I had to throw out, or I got to throw out a first pitch, which let me tell you, was super cool, but a little bit nerve-wracking if you haven't thrown a baseball in like 40 years. So it worked. He caught it because he was a really young agile catcher. So we are thrilled to have Little League back here, using Albert Park in all of our facilities. So with that, we do take public comment on the Council, excuse me, the City Manager and Councilmember reports. So if you have any comments you'd like to make on what you just heard on this item, now is the time. Looking in the chambers, not seeing anyone on this in the chambers. Is there anyone online who would like to comment on the reports?
I see no hands raised, and I'll give everyone a moment. I see no further public comment, or no public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment and move to the consent calendar. My colleagues want to poll any items on the consent agenda. Not seeing any. Are there any comments from the public on the consent calendar items 4A through 4F?
Thank you, Council. Michael McIntosh. And just for a foundation, I moved to San Rafael in 1964, so I like our community. I wanted to actually compliment you on the consent calendar. I spend most of my time these days requesting Fairfax to follow different laws, rules, and compliance. And I've noticed of late, and even speaking to the First Amendment Coalition of what we can and can't do within 6250 through 6270, that Fairfax will continue to put things of financial interest and things of expenditure of public funds on a consent calendar without allowing the public to pull them for discussion. We have recently been able to force them to give us three minutes per item, should we so choose. But in looking at a lot of the agendas, excuse me, the consent calendars from your agendas, it's very nice not seeing things jammed through. I think it was in February, they actually pushed through 25 items on a consent calendar, including financial disclosures of their budget and different expenses. So thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments on the reports from folks in the chamber? Not seeing any. Anyone online like to comment on City Manager Councilmember reports? Oh, sorry. Oh, my gosh. That was a rewind of the tape. Anyone else like to comment on the consent calendar?
I see no hands raised, and I'll give everyone a moment. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment and ask for a motion on the consent agenda.
So moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries 3-0. The next item is a special presentation, and we will come down off the dais, and we are, oh, let me take, oh, wait, before we do this, thank you. We're going to have a presentation to Larry, who'll be so familiar, Leckham, retiring from the fire commission. And we accept public comment prior to the reading of the proclamation. So if there's anyone who'd like to comment on this item before we read it, now is the time, if you're here in the chambers. Not seeing anyone. Anyone virtually like to comment on this item?
I see no hands raised, and I'll give everyone a moment. I see no public comment.
Thank you. We'll close the public comment, and we'll read the proclamation. Come on over here. Okay. So I understand you're only the third emeritus to be given that designation, so this is a great honor, and I am going to read this proclamation to you. So whereas Larry Leckham has served both as a member and during the last year Chairperson of the San Rafael Fire Commission, and whereas during your nearly 20 years of service on the fire commission, San Rafael and adjacent communities have benefited tremendously from your volunteer efforts. Your fire investigation training and experience in countywide partnerships with many public safety professionals, numerous committees, and working groups. And whereas you have contributed countless hours of volunteer time to improve the San Rafael Fire Department, document its history through film and photography as Photo 50, and your commitment to assisting the department with its growth and experience. Whereas Larry has served as a longtime member of the San Rafael Fire Commission, is a strong advocate for both the community and firefighter safety through training, formalization, and preparedness. Whereas in recognition of your insurmountable experience and dedication to the fire commission, tonight we honor Larry Leckham with Fire Commission Emeritus status. Now therefore, I, Kate Khan, on behalf of the council, to hereby proclaim my sincere appreciation to Larry Leckham for his many important contributions and community service to the city of San Rafael. Congratulations. And I'm going to let you say a few words, but first I want to say, I met you when I first, I think 25 years ago. And those who know Larry know his deep, deep dedication to the community, and the way that he shows up is through that incredible eye he has behind the camera. And we all know that pictures speak a thousand words, and that is what he has brought, and that is a legacy that will last. And we are so grateful because that will always be here, and people will be able to refer to that and to connect with San Rafael because of your efforts. Would you like to say a few words?
One or two.
One or two, all right.
Thank you very much. For those of you who don't know it, Kate and I met 20-something years ago as members of a, what was then called the Critical Facilities Committee. And our charge way back then was to figure out how to build five new fire stations and new police station, seismically reinforce this building. And of course, there were some other things. They wanted two new community centers and a new library is in process. We weren't able to do all of that, but the fact that we had some success is exhibited across the street in the new public safety center that was built and four new fire stations. So we must have done something right. Besides that, I remember when Mayor Borro and the council members interviewed me for the fire commission the first time. One of the things that I said was, if you appoint me, my hope is that I'll be able to find a project to make a difference. And with the help of Chief Gray, we came up with what became known as the Photo 50 Project. I was issued a pager, a department pager, and from that day on, every time there was a fire in San Rafael, I rolled out along with the fire crews, and I brought a camera, they brought hoses and water, and I documented what they were doing and posted that stuff up on a website for the public, for the news media, et cetera. And along the way, on several occasions, Captain Brad Mark, who was the department's investigator at the time, would ask me to, since I had fancy cameras and he had a little department point and shoot, would I mind taking some evidence photos or something for him, which I did. And one thing led to another, and my curiosity about what he was doing and how sent me off to take some forensic photography classes with the FBI, and eventually, months of training with the state fire marshal and fire investigation, fire science, and explosives and what have you. And the next thing I knew, I was responding right along with the fire crews, not just to take pictures, but to wait for them to put out the fire and then for me to go to work, figure out how it started or who started it, if that was the case. It's been a fantastic ride for all these years. And probably the thing I'm most happy about and pleased with is the fact that I got to work with some wonderful people for so many years, the folks in the fire department that do what they do, do a fantastic job. So I want to thank Mayor Kate and the council members and city staff for the recognition. I want to thank Chief White, and in particular, the men and women of the San Rafael Fire Department for tolerating me and working, letting me work with them for all these years. It's been really terrific. And then last but not least, I want to thank my sweet wife, Paula, who persisted for all these years, and the pager going off at 2:00 in the morning, and me getting up and leaving, and her not knowing whether I'd be back in an hour, which happened in some cases, or a full day in other cases. But it's been a great ride. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're going to do some photos here.
Okay, 80. Hi, 80. Okay, great. 80, smile. Got you.
And it's really a testament to both the fire commission and to Larry, the fact that so many of the commissioners were here. So thank you for your dedication. We all benefit from your efforts. Thank you. We have one item on our public hearing tonight, and it's a General Plan and Housing Element Annual Progress Report. And I see that stuff is here, and I know they will also rewrite this. This is a report card, so we're looking backwards. It's very confusing. Maybe you can speak to that, because we're also looking forward, but not to me. So if you could clarify that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes, welcome to Director Judice.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Kate and council members. So tonight's presentation will be provided by Monica Lee, who is our senior planner, hired pretty recently. This is her first time speaking tonight. Monica comes to us with some experience with affordable housing as well as development review, so we're really lucky to have her. And also Alexis Kaptanian, our housing management analyst. So Monica and Alexis will be providing the presentation on the progress we've done over the past year, essentially what you were saying, our report card. But there are a number of things that we don't get to share in our report card to the Housing and Community Development Department of the state that I wanted to share with you. We don't get credit for this, but it's work that goes towards demonstrating our commitment to addressing the housing crisis. So I wanted to share this with you. I wanted to start with the fact that we've hired recently an Assistant Director of Community Development, and he is managing the Housing and Homelessness Program. So that, in combination with hiring Monica, who has a background in affordable housing, and of course, having Alexis, our housing management analyst, demonstrates that continued commitment. And then going into just some things that are happening around town that aren't specifically in our Housing Element update, or sorry, our annual progress update. We have a few construction projects you might have seen. Aegis Housing is 103 units that's currently under construction. Bivillon, 67 affordable housing units that is almost completed, has been under construction for the past year. We also have 3301 Carner Boulevard. That project is a home key project. That project is a home key project proposing forty-one affordable housing, affordable supportive housing units going through the building permit process right now. And then we have various applications that have been submitted currently under review. I won't go into any details, but we have about five hundred units in the downtown. We have North Gate, as you know, which is thirteen hundred units. These are projects that were not under consideration for tonight. I just wanted to share that those are things that are happening that will come to you in the future, may come to you in the future. Some of these will not. And then I want to go into just some things that are received entitlements, not part of Monica's presentation tonight because they received entitlements prior to two thousand twenty-two. We have Marydale, which includes forty-five units. Ten ten North Gate, also known as North Gate Walk, which includes one hundred and thirty-six units. Seven oh three Third Street, which includes a hundred and twenty units, and then eighty-eight Vivian. Actually, that is part of the tonight's presentation. So all this, wanted to let you know that that, those projects have been entitled, have not pulled permits. There are a number of reasons that we have, we have reached out to the developers and just kind of regularly check in things that are impacting and causing a pause on these development projects are COVID, which was followed by supply chain issues, which resulted in construction cost increases and more recently interest rate hikes. So those are things that are impacting, you know, the progress and continuing causing a pause in the development process. So we'll continue to reach out to developers and, you know, look for ways to help support them. And, you know, we'll continue to update you on the on the progress of those. Some projects that are being presented tonight by Monica in terms of the numbers include Los Gamos, which was one hundred and ninety-two units, which was approved in two thousand twenty-two, and Aldersley, which added fourteen units of senior housing. And then, as I mentioned, eighty-eight Vivian, which is seventy units of housing in the canal. And then kind of looking towards the future, so I don't end on a downer. We have the city council approved a north San Rafael PDA priority development area in North San Rafael and one in southeast San Rafael as well. We've been actively seeking funding to allow us to prepare neighborhood plans for those areas. And we recently received word that we have finally been successful in achieving grants. So we have about seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars for each of those neighborhood plans. We expect to hear, receive a formal offer letter in July, June, July, and then we'll prepare requests for proposals shortly after that. So that's, that's something positive that's happening. And then as, you know, building permits, we, our building division continues to process building permits and our code enforcement has actively been doing apartment inspections for all our apartments within the city. And so with that, I will go ahead and pass it to Monica and allow her to provide our, our report card.
Thank you. Welcome, Monica.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, members of the public and fellow staff. Tonight, I'm happy to be presenting the general plan annual progress report and housing element progress report for two thousand twenty-two, which will include some background information, the general plan program highlights, the city Rena's progress, the housing element program highlights, the two thousand twenty-three to two thousand thirty-one housing element updates, and options for the council to consider. The state requires all cities to prepare and adopt the general plan. The general plan is the city's blueprint for meeting the community's long-term vision for the future. Additionally, government code section six five four zero zero required that cities prepare an annual progress report on the status of the city's general plan. The purpose of the APR is to provide local legislative bodies and the public with information regarding the implementation of the general plan and to inform the public of the progress in meeting the community's goals. Additionally, the government code includes specific requirements for preparing a housing element APR, which is reported on a form prescribed by HCD. An APR on the general plan must be presented to the city council for review and acceptance prior to submitting the APRs to government, to the governor's office of planning and research and the State Department of Housing and Community Development by April first. On February twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-three, staff presented the general plan annual progress report and housing element annual progress report for two thousand twenty-two to the Planning Commission. The commissioners provided the following comments. Outline issues the city is hearing from customers, provide data on affordable housing units completed and trends in homelessness, provide ADU rental data, color code the general plan program progress column with green, red, or yellow, include information on housing in Lufi Fund, provide matrix study on eviction and homelessness and eviction and gentrification, and include public comment regarding a comprehensive tree master plan and inventory, which is included under community outreach, public comment section. After the commission received public comment, they asked questions of staff and made recommendations. The commission voted five zero to accept the general plan APR and housing element APR for two thousand twenty-two and directed staff to present the report to the city council at a public meeting. The general plan programs detailed, detailed in attachment one, pages sixteen to one forty-four include the, the key programs and initiatives the city undertook in two thousand twenty-two. The information was compiled from various departments responsible for implementing the general plan programs and policy pertaining to their functions and oversight. Highlighted here are just some of the accomplishments the city achieved in two thousand twenty-two, including spearheaded a community engagement effort and formed a stakeholder committee to update the canal community-based transportation plan, amended the municipal code to include two thousand twenty-two California Reach codes that helped drive greenhouse gas reductions, launched the Parks and Recreation Master Plan Progress, prepared the flood risks and sea level rise adaptation report, and incorporated it into the general plan two thousand forty. Table B is a summary of prior permitting activity in the current planning cycle by level of affordability. Reading from left to right, the top row includes the income levels, the Rena allocation by income level each year within the fifth cycle, the total number of units permitted within the fifth cycle, the percent of Rena met, and the total remaining number of Rena. In two thousand twenty-two, there was a total of thirty permits issued for very low, sixty-two for low, zero for moderate, and fifty-five for above moderate.
I'm not sure if the chart we're seeing is exactly what you're describing. I mean, it's a really helpful, okay, okay. Sorry, I just want to do the recap. I think we were trying to.
Yes, sorry, sorry about that.
Okay, don't worry.
Yes. So yes, um, yes. So this is table B is a summary of prior permitting activity in the current planning cycle by level of affordability. Reading from left to right, the top row includes the income levels, the Rena allocation by income level each year within the fifth cycle, the total number of units permitted within the fifth cycle, the percent of Rena met, and the total remaining number of Rena. In two thousand twenty-two, there was a total of thirty permits issued for very low, sixty-two for low, zero for moderate, and fifty-five for above moderate. The general plan housing element programs detailed in attachment one, pages eight to fifteen, include key programs and initiative the city undertook in two thousand twenty-two. Highlighted here are just some of the accomplishments the city achieved in two thousand twenty-two, including funded sixty-six units of affordable senior housing at the Vivilon Healthy Ages Campus Project at ninety-nine, I mean, nine 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 Third Street, awarded four hundred thousand to Canal Alliance for the acquisition of an existing apartment building to preserve affordable housing and prevent tenant displacement, secured five hundred twenty-two thousand in grant funding for intensive care case management to help in housing placement through the state's encampment resolution fund, adopted and updated affordable housing in Lufi based on a study joint completed with other Marin jurisdictions. And this slide shows the two thousand twenty-three to two thousand thirty-one housing element update timeline. The city submitted its draft two thousand twenty-three, two thousand thirty-one housing element for review on December twentieth, two thousand twenty-two. After the city received HCD's comment, anticipated to be received in late March or early April, the document will be revised and public review draft will be considered for adoption. Government code section six five four zero zero states the general plan and housing element annual progress report shall be considered at an annual public meeting before the city council, where members of the public shall be allowed to provide oral testimony and written comments. The city council has the following options to consider on this matter, receive and accept the report, which is what is staff, staff recommends, direct staff to return with more information, or take no action. This concludes the end of the staff report. Feel free to ask any questions of staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, do you want to? We can hold our questions. Yeah, Alexis, yep, you're on.
Great. Thanks, Monica. And we just wanted to, in addition to presenting the two thousand twenty-two annual progress report, we wanted to take this opportunity to provide an update on housing policy priorities that were previously identified by the city council. And so in two thousand twenty, the city council directed staff to pursue fifteen measures to address challenges to the approval and development of housing. And so far, the city has completed eleven of these priorities. In two thousand twenty-two, in particular, the city established a pilot program for streamlined review of certain residential projects and also updated the affordable housing in Lufi, as Monica mentioned. And staff will be bringing proposed changes to commercial linkage fees to the city council for consideration during the second quarter of two thousand twenty-three, so that's coming right up. So the city council has supported housing development through a variety of actions, and we just wanted to be able to kind of share that as context for the report that Monica just presented. And specifically, we want to provide some brief data snapshots related to two actions that the city council took in two thousand twenty-one, including updating the city's ADU regulations and also increasing flexibility in the city's affordable housing requirement for developers. So the city updated its ADU ordinance in December of two thousand twenty-one in response to changes in state law. And over the last six years, the California Legislature has modified state law governing ADUs and JADUs, which are accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. The California Legislature has multiple, modified state law multiple times in an effort to reduce barriers, streamline the approval process, and expand production. And so we're sharing this chart, which shows that the city seen a considerable increase in ADU activity following the change in state laws effective in two thousand seventeen. We've seen considerable increase in activity, both in building permits issued and in completed construction. As Monica's presentation showed, most recently in two thousand twenty-two, forty-five building permits were issued for construction of ADUs, which is higher than in any other year of this eight-year Rena cycle. And then in addition to updating the ADU ordinance in two thousand twenty-one, the city council also adopted changes to its affordable housing requirement for developers. And the city requires all new developments, residential and non-residential, to contribute towards the provision of affordable housing. And in February two thousand twenty-one, the city council amended that affordable housing obligation for residential projects specifically. And this was in an effort to encourage construction of entitled housing development. So making sure projects that got entitled, trying to give them a better chance of actually being built. The city lowered its affordable housing requirement for market rate developments from twenty percent to ten percent and provided some additional flexibility in how the requirement is met. And city council directed staff to kind of monitor and evaluate the effect of the changes. And of course, there are a variety of factors that impact construction outcomes. However, initial observations suggest some potential success. So this is a graph that shows the number of housing units issued building permits and units that were finalized or completed construction between two thousand eighteen and two thousand twenty-two. And the number of housing units that were issued building permits more than doubled from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two. And the number of housing units constructed decreased only slightly from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two despite, despite the supply chain issues and increased construction costs that Director Judase mentioned. And just as additional context from the graph that we just showed, that additional flexibility that was provided in the amended policy allowed, for instance, the development at Locklomen Marina to contribute three point six million dollars to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund in lieu of building affordable units on site. And so in that example, it enabled the completion of units that were previously stalled at Locklomen Marina to be completed. And then it, at the same time, funded awards to one hundred percent affordable housing projects, including one ninety Mill Street and nine nine, nine 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 Third Street, which are listed in the table here. Overall, from two thousand twenty through two thousand twenty-two, the city awarded over four million dollars in funding to support affordable housing through its Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And then lastly, this is a graphical representation of the data table that Monica presented earlier, showing units issued building permits each year from two thousand fifteen through two thousand twenty-two. But each color represents units of a different income level. And you can see that there's an increase in the blue color, which are the very low income units in two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two because of the projects at one ninety Mill Street and nine 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 Third Street. And we're pointing this out because some of the changes to the city's affordable housing requirements enabled the city to support these projects through its trust fund, which contain very low income units that are often challenging to get built. And so the city continues efforts to reduce barriers to housing development, including in the draft housing element that Monica mentioned, which is not up for discussion tonight, but we will bring, be bringing that to you for consideration in the coming months. And the info that I've presented will not be included in the annual progress report, but we wanted to provide it as context for the Rena numbers that Monica presented. And thank you, and we'll be happy to take questions.
Thank you. Fantastic presentation, and hopefully folks have read the staff report because it gets very, you actually go through each item of the general plan, and I didn't count all the number of programs. Couple hundred, I would imagine, and for each one.
Over eight hundred programs.
Eight hundred. It was many pages worth, I can tell you that. And, and you have a little narrative about where the city is. So I just wanted to mention that to folks that might be listening because you did a great job summarizing, but the meaty part was really online in that staff, in the staff report. So we'll start with questions from the council. Councilmember Hill, we'll start with you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation, Monica and Alexis. I had a question on SP thirty-five in the staff report. It mentions in two thousand twenty-two that we didn't have SP thirty-five activity. Is that accurate?
Yes, we, we didn't receive an official SP thirty-five application in two thousand twenty-two. We received maybe inquiries and and maybe projects that might be eligible, but there was no official SP thirty-five application.
And is that consistent across the municipalities in Marin? And the reason why I'm asking this question, I think there's a lot of interest in the community about developers invoking an SP thirty-five project. And actually, if you could just, in a, in a sentence, explain what SP thirty, or if it takes more than a sentence, obviously, go there, but explain what SP thirty-five is.
Okay, I think that Alexis was able to contact some, some folks that, from the different jurisdictions in Marin to see if there is any other applications that were submitted for two thousand twenty-two.
Yeah, so, so Senate Bill thirty-five applies in cities that have not made sufficient progress on their regional housing needs allocation or Rena goal. And so it requires jurisdictions to streamline the approval of certain housing projects by providing a ministerial approval project, process. And so process. And so in San Rafael, in particular, projects that would want to utilize this process must include at least 10% affordability. And so that's just a little bit of context around what SP 35 is. As Monica said, we did not receive an application in 2022. And in speaking with a couple of other jurisdictions in Marin County, that is pretty consistent. So I have not heard from any other jurisdiction in Marin that has had an SP 35 application this year. There are a couple jurisdictions that had an application, one application in maybe 2020, but none this year.
Is there, can you maybe speculate or surmise why it is that, because I think a lot of folks were curious if folks, you know, developers are going to start invoking SP 35 projects, why we're not seeing any?
I'll comment just specifically on San Rafael, the city of San Rafael. And in speaking with our planning team and our planning manager in particular, there are pretty significant tribal cultural resources in the city, within the city of San Rafael. And so, and then combined with that, the city of San Rafael is generally supportive of housing developments. And so what we're seeing is that it can take a long time to move through the SP 35 process if you have significant tribal cultural resources. And because of that, developers may be electing to move through the standard development application process if it doesn't have significant barriers.
Just wanted to add that it's not necessarily that the projects themselves, though, are experiencing or noticing, or whether there's cultural resources on those sites. It's really more of SP 35 requiring consultation with local tribes who have requested consultation. And that's taking a little bit longer than we had envisioned, I think, that applicants had envisioned. And I think when we reached out to other cities, I think it was Nevada and maybe another one other where they were experiencing the same thing, where you received an application for an SP 35 process, and the time that it's taking to go through the consultation is more extensive than we were aware would be. And so for us, some of these applications, some of these applicants, we have had a recent applicant who has chosen to go through the normal process and request entitlements through our standard design review process.
Thank you. One more question, which is, I was noticing on the numbers in this last cycle, the last two years, 2021 and 2022, it appears that San Rafael has made some, I would say, significant progress. Clearly, we did not meet the target for last cycle. But does HCD take that into consideration as far as not just that we've adopted policies, but that they're actually producing in a different way than they did before? Does HCD take that into consideration for, as we're, you know, if we're making progress, even if it's qualitatively? I think there's some quantitative process we've made, progress we've made. But I think, you know, even though we haven't achieved maybe the annual target, does that matter?
Unfortunately, I think what you're asking for about is whether we haven't issued permits like we're required to. We've issued a number of, approved a number of projects and, you know, issued entitlements. HCD is only looking at, once they get to, you know, pass the building permit phase. So we don't get credit for all of the work that, you know, the decision makers have made and your city council has made. And, but yes, so to answer your question, we don't get that credit. We get credit once building permits are issued. And, you know, as you know, we have a number of projects that have been entitled that aren't moving through the process because of these non-governmental constraints that they're experiencing. And so, you know, that's, it's frustrating.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy, any questions?
Well, that's exactly the right word to end on, frustrating, to look at this. I'm, that's on the high level. So thank you so much for such a detailed report. There's lots of information here. I'd like to try and distill some principles from it. And if you could help me with my understanding, because there's so much information. So if I'm looking at Table 3, and I'm seeing, I'm just going down to the bottom to the total units, and I'm seeing total units to date over on the right-hand side says 535 that I take to be permitted, right? So Table 3, Regional Housing Needs Allocation.
Yeah. Are you going to pull up the slide? That'll be probably, yeah. Hold on one second.
Well, then I'm going to go to another one.
Yeah, there we go.
Okay, so 530%, oh, 50, okay, you've got 50. Perfect. Well, wait a minute. Okay, yeah, that's right. So we're getting about half of our RENA numbers permitted. But then if I go, so that's 535. So then if I go to the table, Table 2, I have one year, calendar year 2022, and completed units, I have 95. So one year we got 95 units. Right? I'm trying to...
Over the years, our reporting requirements have changed dramatically. Where we used to just report the building permits that were issued, now we're having to prepare these extensive tables that ask for a lot of information. And I think what HCD is really trying to get to is, where's the stall at? You know, is it when an applicant submit an application and they can't get an answer from city staff? Or is it after you get an entitled project and you can't get through the building permit process? Or is it after that? And so what you're seeing in this column under completed, this is the number of projects that have submitted an application, and then staff has responded to that saying, okay, you've submitted an application and all the information we need to be able to move you through the process. That's called a complete application.
Oh, so it's not completed, it's inconstructed?
Correct.
Oh, it's just the application?
The application is now deemed complete, and now we can process it.
Okay.
It's that additional information that HCD is requesting of us.
Okay, so is there anywhere where we're talking about what's actually been built?
Did we have a chart? I'm trying to remember if you had a chart, Alexis.
So I do have in a... I do have an attachment to, I have units final 2018 to 2022.
An attachment 22?
Attachment 2 to the staff report. I don't know, Monica, if we're able to...
That's after the...
What page is that? Do you know?
Yeah, it is Page 4.
Page 4 of Attachment 2?
Correct.
Attachment 1 is very long.
Yeah, this one's much shorter. It's seven pages.
Looks like it's Page 250.
I was going to say, there's 254 pages.
I'm seeing affordable units. So Attachment 2, I'm not seeing numbers. I was looking at the chart. Okay. Okay, so, all right. But we're not tying this back to our RENA numbers, so I'm not... So of our RENA numbers, what I was trying to get at is how many are actually getting built of, as compared to our RENA numbers?
For 2022?
The last cycle.
Yes, 2022. Oh, you mean the whole eight years or just 2020? The whole eight years?
Well, for 2022, we only have permits issued, but we don't, permits won't be, we don't have permits, we don't have permits. Well, we do have the permits final for 2022, but not for any projects that we recently approved in 22, or we recently issued. I mean, it may capture some of the permits that we issued, but maybe not all of them. So the numbers won't look exactly the same. So, for example, just because we issued 147 units in 2022, doesn't mean that we're going to have 147 developed units. So that can take some time. They may be developing those units in 2023. And then there are some units that were developed in 2022 that were, where the permits were issued in prior years.
Right. Okay, that all starts the problem. Help me, Director Judasee. We're trying to get at the policy level issue here. I'm not trying to chase numbers. I'm looking, you know, it's supposed to be a report card. And so I guess my question to you, Director, what's our grade?
So just going back to what Monica was saying, so we have, we're making progress at different levels, right? We're getting entitled, we're getting projects entitled, we're getting projects permitted. And once those projects are permitted, the construction begins. And construction is not going to necessarily happen on that same, within that same year. Sometimes it'll take about a year or even longer to get through the process, just because, you know, there may be rain delays or other unforeseen events that could happen to delay the project. So the report card is based on the number of permits that have been issued. We don't have the number of permits that have been finalized this time, but if that's something that your council is needing, we can definitely can start bringing that to you in future years. That's kind of what we did with the ADU. The ADU projects, we, one of the charts that Alexis showed demonstrated how many permits had been issued since 2017, and how many projects had been finalized since that time. And so, like I said, in future years, we can bring how many of those projects that have been permitted have actually been finalized. I think that's good information. It's not information that HCD is currently seeking, but we can provide that to you.
It's great to give them all the details that they want, but I'm looking for a high-level policy on conclusion. Is what we're doing working? It looks like it's mixed.
What we're doing is working. We're getting, we're, and projects are getting entitled. I think the delay really is not related to what we're doing. It's really just, you know, the market, COVID, you know, the high supply chain issues, increase in construction costs. Those things have impacted and have made, have resulted in a pause in a lot of, quite a number of units. And so it's working for, in terms of what we're doing, it's just, you know, there are other things that are happening that are not within our control.
Okay, so things within our control, we're getting an A on. Things outside of our control are what is impeding the actual measurable results on our streets.
Correct. Thank you.
I'm going to build on those same questions that my colleagues asked. So I wanted to build on what Councilmember Hill had been asking around SP 35. And you had said in the report, and Alexis, you also repeated this too, that the SP 35 was triggered because we haven't made progress. Specifically, I saw the above moderate, it's a big fat zero. But I'm curious, what is the number that it would need to be to not have SP 35 triggered? Or do they not do it that way? Is there a percentage? Does that make sense? Because I know what the goal is, and we know it's been triggered. But how far are we, again, it's really following up on what Councilwoman Bushy's like, how far are we off?
How many number, what the number of units would have to be?
Yes.
They, I'll have to look into that.
Approximate. I'm just curious.
Yeah, I think what they do is, we have this number, the 1,000 units in this case. And so each year, you're getting that percentage of those units. You're obligated to demonstrate progress. So it's basically divided by the eight. So each year, you're showing that you've demonstrated that level of progress. It's new, and I don't think, it's not consistent. They're not, you know, updating every year. I think last year, they just maintained the same, you know, they assume that whatever progress you made the prior year is the progress that you're going to continue making. And they're evaluating every couple of years, not on an annual basis.
Okay. So as progress, so that we're divided by, again, like, like Councilwoman Bush, I don't want to get into the numbers of it. If we're achieving 50% success in all the categories, or is it, does it need to be 50% across all of them overall? Again, we're just trying to understand. And we know that the reporting has changed, and we know that this keeps changing. HCD keeps changing a little bit around the numbers. So I'm just trying to understand a little bit more about how it ties to SP 35.
Yeah, that's a good question. I don't know, I don't have the answer to that, but I can, we can get it for you next time.
Yeah, I think when we have, thank you, when we bring forward the new housing element, maybe having additional information that the state might have on SP 35, because it's going to be something that's here. It's not daylighting, I mean, it's not sunsetting at this point, it's going to be around for a while. Okay, so that was questions on that. And then following up on the RENA numbers, the regional housing need allocation numbers. So I look at this, we have the 1,000, and if I remember, it's an eight-year cycle, right? So, and I think they're eight years up there. I, it's kind of looking past, so going to Councilwoman Bush's point, so you look at this, and we're only entitled, it's about permitting, not building, because that's all the complexity of when it actually manifests. And maybe this is a discussion from, we're talking about the future. I look at that number, and I know our new RENA numbers are over 3,000. So when I look at this, and I see that we're at 53% or whatever it is, maybe when we talk about it in the future, like, what's that going to look like when we talk about the next housing element? Because these numbers are only going to get worse.
Right.
So I'm curious what we might do or what we should be thinking about, given this past information to inform our future conversation.
Yeah, that's a good question. That's a good question, or?
Comments, all right. But I was just, that was more a thing, because this is all contextual, right? This is where we've been, and we're really using this to figure out what are the policies that we want to do differently. So that's what we're trying to drill down on.
Yeah. And I can say that there are a couple of things that I'm seeing, at least. We have, your council adopted the Downtown Precise Plan that has created, you know, some objective standards that developers are able to really easily look at. And so I think what we'll be seeing is, you know, more of that, projects that are being proposed under that, within the Downtown Precise Plan boundaries, that will go through the process. And because it's more clear, I think you're going to see more applications in that, go through that process. You know, again, that's only the governmental process, and we don't really control the thing that happens after that. And so the question is, you know, will we see development after that? We hope so, because we have a pretty big number to achieve for the next cycle.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that. Okay. Well, let's hear from the community on this. Thank you both. So, oh, yeah, go ahead. Councilmember Hill has a follow-up question.
So actually, Mayor Kate's question prompted me to think of putting the numbers into real numbers. When we think about 3,000 over the next eight years, roughly divided by eight is 375 per year. Obviously, between, are those percentages remaining the same? So, for example, of the 1,000, if approximately 240 are very low, does that mean we should see about a quarter? We're being asked to make a quarter of the 3,000 production. Is that, is it different?
It is different. It's not the same breakdown. So I can, I know we have 428. I don't have those numbers in front of me. I know extremely low, I think it's 428 units. So just to give you an idea, it's a little bit different, and we're happy to get those numbers for you.
But is it about 375 per year? If we play that out by eight years, gets to, okay. So it's just, just a benchmark is what I'm hearing, is just under 400. We need to produce under 400 a year?
When we bring the housing element to you, we'll be able to share like what the breakdowns are, the different income levels.
Thank you.
And I think it would be helpful in that conversation to maybe not revisit this entire presentation, but to also provide that context of where we've been and how the numbers are changing and the percentages and everything else moving target. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Let's open public comment on this item, on this, our progress report. You can give us a grade if you'd like. So come on down. Yes.
My name's Larry Luckum. I'm a resident of San Rafael.
I'm a resident of San Rafael. You know me as a fire commissioner and investigator and what have you. That's my side job. For close to fifty years, I've been a housing builder, most of it low income. And I'd like to follow on something that Mary Beth said earlier. Are we doing the right thing? Most of the affordable housing or what constitutes affordable housing in San Rafael is in the canal area. It was all built in the sixties by merchant builders. It's what would now be classified as, as Class C housing. The way to get affordability in housing, it, there aren't really only two ways to do it. One is you subsidize builders with land or with various other things. And I, I've operated under lots of those. I, I currently have, at one point I had a couple of hundred rental units. I'm down to about fifty-five now. And sixty percent of it is Section Eight, Section Eight voucher program. But I've done mod rehab, I've done Section two twenty-three F mortgage subsidized stuff. So one way is to subsidize it. The other, the other way is to, is to get merchant builders to build inexpensively. And inexpensive doesn't necessarily mean throwaway housing because if you look at the stuff that's in the canal area and, and in my own inventory, which is all in the East Bay, this is not stuff that was, was built as high-end, but it's all sixty years old and it's still safe, decent and sanitary and operated at, at a really high level. If, if you can get that, you can get affordable housing. It's more difficult now. The, the age when most of that was built was the fifties and sixties when they were building units by the thousands. But that was also the day when land was relatively inexpensive, the demand was high. And there were relatively few restrictions in, at a community level and requirements on builders for things that went beyond what they could immediately modify.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's my two cents.
Yeah, no, thank you for your two cents.
Hello, council. I'll begin with by apologizing for not reading your housing draft before I came to your meeting. But hearing a couple of points, I'd like to point a couple of things out. If you're adding a just cause or rent control provision in your future housing element or incorporating your current, if it's already not been accepted, that will add an additional cost to any and all builders. All of our affordable housing and our housing requirements these days have a known net loss. The thing you might want to be more concerned about without an approved housing element isn't your SB thirty-five that allows for additional density with proximity to transportation and other resource requirements. You might be looking at your SB three thirty application. The one comment that the lady in front row made is very true. If you want to also streamline this, getting your ODDS in place will very much help because it takes away another subjective variable so you can actually push this through. But the fact that you're out of compliance with your housing element, if I heard this presentation correct, that means for your future zoning to make your properties compliant so you can to your building, you're now restricted down to twelve months instead of thirty-six. You also have different opportunities that people can come in and streamline this process that could be not as complimentary to the futurants of our community that we might want to see. And this doesn't mean to be exclusionary by any means. We can incorporate all means. But there's also public purpose bonds that you should also be concerned about. These are instrumented through the HCD. I do have conversations with the HCD. There was a comment earlier made about the acquisition of housing that San Rafael could basically subsidize. The HCD will allow you to right now bring forth different bonds that you can actually purchase as property, which will also exempt you from paying state property tax. As long as municipality owns that, that bond matures in fifteen years and you can sit on it. It would then be re-taxed by property tax if you sell it. But what's happening, a lot of developers that are very astute to these things and have the financial wherewithal, they're picking up these pieces of property through these different public purpose and competing bonds and then putting them through a pass-through like an LLC where they're finding, finding an administrative body to manage it at one percent and then they're still exempt from property tax. So these are all things that you can put in your measure to acquire your housing.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else like to comment on this item? Yeah, yep, come down.
Good evening. Albatieri, living Gersel Park. I did read through some of the materials that were provided for the meeting tonight. And as somebody else mentioned, there's a lot of information to go through. What I was trying to get from the presentation is similar to what Mary Beth was asking or Councilwoman Basie was asking for, is a red or a green sign. Are we doing well or are we not doing well? And I didn't see that and I'll read through it again and maybe the future presentation will be more summarized. The one question I do have is for those items that are under your control, which one, or if there are a few, can you identify that you wish were changed that would help you be much more successful at the goals you're trying to achieve specifically for the housing element? What I'm trying to ask, is there an obstacle in your way that could be removed by the efforts of the city council or the city manager that would make your job that much easier? So that's really the only question I have.
Thank you. Hi, Bill.
Good evening. Good to see you all and good to be here. I'm Bill Carney, representing Sustainable San Rafael. Thank you for taking an important step towards reducing greenhouse gas emissions this year by adopting the new building electrification reach codes called for in the general plan. We ask that you follow up in the coming year by working with the county to adopt a comprehensive plan and ordinance for replacing gas furnaces and water heaters in existing buildings with clean and efficient heat pumps. This follows on the lead of the Air Quality District just last week and implements a crucial program of the general plan to significantly reduce the causes of climate change. To help pull existing carbon out of the air, we welcome the city's intention to complete its update of San Rafael's tree ordinance later this spring. For fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, we ask that you follow the recommendation of the Planning Commission to undertake two additional general plan programs called, called for in that ordinance, a comprehensive tree master plan and inventory, incorporating tree-related elements of the Climate Action Plan to provide crucial guidance for successful implementation both of the new tree ordinance and of the remaining urban forestry programs in the general plan. Finally, turning to the housing element, we note that during the last Reno cycle, San Rafael was only built only six percent of the housing required for moderate income households. To address that severe shortfall in providing the missing middle of workforce housing, we urge you to consider our previous recommendations to augment your new ten percent inclusionary housing requirement with an additional five percent moderate requirement, a step that would have little or no impact on development performance given the income range of moderate in Marin. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Other comments from folks in the chamber? Not seen any? Anyone virtually like to comment on this item?
I do see one hand raised.
Hello, this is Amy Likeover. I convened the San Rafael Tree Group with seven local conservation leaders. I commend the city's plans to complete its update of San Rafael's tree ordinance in two thousand and twenty-three, following up on the city council's goals for fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three. The tree group that I represent has worked long and well with the DPW to bring about the thorough ordinance that you will be considering soon. For the coming year, we ask you implement two additional general plan twenty forty programs called for in that ordinance. First, a comprehensive tree master plan, CDP three point five A. And second, an inventory, CDP three point five B, incorporating tree-related elements of the city's climate change action plan. We needed a tree master plan and inventory to provide a comprehensive and cost-effective framework to guide the implementation of this full range of general plan tree programs. We thank you for recognizing that trees are vital and a contributing, and contributing constituents of our community. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. This is Kate Powers. I live in North San Rafael, Intera Linda. And my question is about the status of the Objective Design and Development Standards. I recognize that the downtown PDA has the Form Based Code that was implemented during the, the Precise Plan. And I'm just wondering, now that the Southeast San Rafael and Intera Linda PDAs have recently been designated for funding, how the, the development of the Objective Design and Development Standards will interrelate with the specific plans or the precise plans that will happen in those two PDAs? I think they're important because it is one way that, that the city can still control the urban design as development ensues, you know, is implemented throughout the city. And so I was just wondering if maybe community development could comment on that. Thank you.
I see no other hands raised and I'll give everyone a moment. I see no further public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment. Bless you. Two, two questions. One was the first about question of obstacles to housing production. And on that, we did have the housing priority, the eleven of the fifteen. But so, but maybe you could just speak to that again because we'd started that process, I think, in two thousand and eighteen. And at this point, I don't think we're adding any additional priorities, but maybe you've come up with some in, in that process. And then the second one, which is the status of Objective Design Standards. I think both retroactively, there was a question about the future, which we're really looking at the past tonight. But I still think if you, if you don't mind answering what that might be, I know we'll go in deeper when we do bring forward the housing element.
Yeah, absolutely. So thank you for the question around obstacles that we would want to address, barriers to housing development, just as a little bit of additional context. As Mayor Kate described, this sort of update, the attachment to in the staff report comes out of some informational reports that staff brought to the city council in two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty on several topics. And one topic that the council asked for additional work on was challenges to the approval and development of housing. And so there were eleven key challenges identified. And that report is linked in attachment two. And then the fifteen measures that we mentioned earlier are fifteen measures that were meant to address those key challenges. And then the other thing I would just add is that we have drafted programs for the housing element, the upcoming two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and thirty-one housing element that connect. There are certain programs that are also focused on streamlining and reducing barriers to housing development. We're not discussing that housing element update tonight, but if you're interested, that'll be coming back to the city council in a few months.
Thank you. Yeah, and then I'm just curious because I just, I, I know we're talking about the, we will be talking about the future, but the Objective Design Standards, did that apply? Oh, Director Judas, you got it.
So, yes. Objective Design Standards were part of the Downtown Precise Plan. I imagine as we get moving on the neighborhood plans that that's something that we will look into as a way to provide some certainty to developers as they, you know, look into the future and think about development. It just makes it an easier process to design a project that is already kind of give some standards that you can work with. It works for developers, it works for us as well, especially when you're talking about a buy right process where we can only apply objective standards. It's helpful for us to be able to have something that really reflects what we want to see. So I think we all kind of want to, want to have that. You know, developing community really wants to have something that they can rely on and not have to submit multiple iterations of their proposals. So does that help answer that question?
Yes, it does. And I realized I had one other question that I had neglected to ask prior. And I think it's very relevant. And that's around the senior units. So when I add up Oakmont, which we, I didn't have that number, but Aegis, Vivalon and Aldersley, that's like two hundred units. Could you speak to, do we get credit for those in our regional housing need allocation? And this is something that I know I brought up on the dais many times because those are two hundred units where folks that live here could be in our community and freeing up other units. Can you speak to those?
An additional frustration for me. Some of the units we get credit for, they're senior housing units that are actually independent living units. A good majority of those we don't get credit for because they're considered assisted living units and not really units that we can count towards our Rena, unfortunately.
So, and, and maybe this is something we can also talk about when we bring forward the next housing element. If there's advocacy work that we can do to change that, it, to me, it's just not reflective of our demographics here and where folks are living. And it is so frustrating to us because those are folks that are here and it's, it's expanding our housing product.
Yeah.
So.
Agree. There, there's, there, we, something, a conversation that we have amongst the county directors that, you know, we really need to push for having those units count because they are providing a living facility for individuals, so.
So when we talk about it, when we get back from HCD, if we could have a portion of the presentation talking about possible strategies for, and, and I know you're talking about it among your managers, but what can we do to support, where we can get other policymakers? Because it's, we're not alone, San Rafael isn't alone in this frustration. So if there's an action item and if it's, we're driving to Sacramento and talking to our representatives, we'll do that. So, okay. Yes, Councilmember Hill, additional question?
So I did notice on the presentation that March twentieth was the date we were to expect the letter. Did we actually receive a letter today?
Yes, we did, at the end of the workday.
I won't ask what, what is in it. That's probably for the next meeting. I just want to affirm that we did receive it on the date expected.
We did, we did. We received it this afternoon.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Okay, any additional comments or closing questions and additional comments? I'll turn to you, Councilmember Bushy.
An excellent compilation of all that we've done and it depicts all that we need to do in there as, as well. So thank you. I'm, I'm prepared to support, accepting the report at the correct time.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill?
As with Council, Councilmember Bush's comments, I agree. Thank you for providing a well-informed report. I did read all the way top to bottom. It's a lot of things to read. I would just call out, you know, there were a lot of progress that we made that I think we want to update the status on. I think we should take credit for the things we actually did because I think we documented that we actually made progress, I think, on seven things where we said no progress. I was like, let's take credit for it. So please update that. And yeah, I think looking back over the last cycle, I think it shows that we can do more. And I would say that we've made significant policy changes over the last two years. I get the sense that while the data, I would say the data feels like it's forthcoming. When I look at all of the design review board meetings and planning commission meetings, it feels like a lot is coming through. I'm using the word feel because it's not resulting yet in built. But I'm, I get the sense that developers are interested, that they are interested in paying in lieu fees and making certain that we can create affordability in the stock as well as taking advantage of building permanent supportive housing as well as other housing stock. I agree with Bill Carney's assessment that there is a missing middle. I am interested in seeing what we can do to create laddered opportunities for community members. So let's continue to look at that. But I think now we're just starting to see things turn with respect to the policy changes that have been made over the last two years. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just close by saying it's always nice to take a moment to look back on what we have done. And just as a reminder, the general plan, it's a twenty-year document. So when you look at where you are, it's how do you gather these priorities over twenty years? And I do think the color coding might be an interesting, I, I'd be interested in that because how do you start to capture the timeline? because how do you start to capture the timeline? The reality is that 800, that's what you told me, 800 programs in there cannot be done in one year. Hopefully, can, the majority can be done over 20 years. So how do we continue to prioritize appropriately year after year? And I know some folks might have a policy that they're especially interested in happening right now. All these priorities are done in context with the other 799 items in there. So part of that is done through our goals and objectives that we do every two years. And, and we need to be strategic about that, because, again, you can't do all 800 in one year. The housing element, I'm glad that HCD is looking at how we can increase housing production in the state of California. Thank you for doing that increased reporting. It's a little bit frustrating, because reporting is, takes time, and, and we want you out there helping to actually make the units come to fruition. So I really, but I do appreciate the looking back. And I do want to give a hats off to the previous council with whom we sat up here with, Councilwoman Bushy and myself, and previous Mayor Phillips, because we had the conversation as things were being entitled, and they were not being built. And so we're starting to see the fruition of that. We'll continue to monitor it. I know the inclusion, the change of the affordability, the inclusion, there was not a total agreement across the community whether that was the right thing to do, so we're going to keep monitoring that, and we are very willing to assess that. We all want the same thing here, which is to have each of those levels, to have those numbers increased, knowing they are going to be increased in the regional housing need allocation that we, that we've already received in our next housing element. So, so thank you for the incredible work that you do. It is massive, and anyone who scrolls through those 200, I mean, ours was 250, I don't know if all 250 were the, the programs, but really keeping your eye on the ball across the board. And it's both in community development, but it's actually in all our departments. Our general plan, it touches on every single department that we have in, in the city, and it really means you guys are working together. And so I just, I really want to call that out. Another reason why we have the best city in Marin County, because you guys are so good at doing that. I also want to express appreciation for the planning commission. They went through this with a fine-tooth comb. As we were, all three of us, actually, were former planning commissioners, so we know that they did the hard lift, and we're really grateful that they were able to do that and pass along the comments that they received. So, great work. I'm pleased by what we've done already, the Downtown Precise Plan, the Form-Based Codes, we've done bold things around housing here in San Rafael, and we'll continue to do it with the PDAs that we have going forward, and really look forward to the next discussion as we look to the future. So, so thank you. And with that, I, let me see, I would request a motion on this item.
I move that we accept the report.
Yeah, there we go.
Second the motion.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries 3-0. I do encourage people to go online and read it. There's a lot of good information in there. We do not have a San Rafael successor agency calendar tonight, so this meeting is adjourned. Stay safe, everyone. Bye.